Welcome, everybody, to the work session. And we have a short agenda, but a very important agenda tonight. And first of all, we'll ask Dr. Nolte, he's got a request, I think, or some information for us.
Just a little information. Board members, you will remember at a work session a month or two ago, we brought you a list of all the things that we are required to report to the board. And some of those are very significant, and we have done them for years in close session, personnel matters and things like that. One of the things that is on the list that we've done for years, myself, Dr. Garrett, I'm sure Mr. Upton and others before her, is we have, from time to time, approved research. And so the first such item that I have approved is in a folder before you. I'll tell you, I'll tell you a little bit about it. It's a pretty simple one. But I also just want to take just a second and give you the criteria that we have used for a long time in approving those. This particular request is from a teacher, eight-year experience teacher, not one of ours, but an eight-year experience teacher who has gone back to graduate school at Western and is working on a master's degree in speech pathology. And one of her graduate projects is to learn more about elementary students who were returning to learn after a concussion. You probably have heard us talk a little bit about return, that yes, you have personal experience around that, do you not? That's right, I'd forgotten about that, Mr. Francis. But we've had for some time return to play, if it's an athlete, and then for two or three years, we actually have a policy on return to learn. And essentially, students with a concussion may have more difficulty reading, fine print, they may have difficulty with light for a while, headaches and so forth and so on. So, and we're pretty adept and comfortable now with checking with the doctor and talking about, you know, how often they can come to school and things like that. We're certainly getting better at it. This young lady's research is not very invasive at all. It is simply a 15-question survey that will be shared with our elementary teachers, and they can choose to opt in and take the survey or not. So it's, it's research that is not, not very intrusive at all. Our people can opt in and can opt out. So I approve that research. The two criteria that we have used for quite some time is twofold. Number, one side of that sheet of paper you see is a letter from the young lady describing the research. If that passes the eye test with us, you know, they're not meeting with students one-on-one, they're not asking odd questions, then that's half of the approval. The second half of the approval is the flip side of that sheet, in which the research has been approved by the university's Institational Review Board. Every reputable college and university has an IRB, an Institutional Review Board, and they are, students should be having their research for the university approved by their own college or university's board. So we look at both of those things. If they both look good, we'll approve it and tell you about it. If we look at both of those and one of them is not right, then we will not approve the research. So that one's pretty simple. Just a new requirement to report that to you. Are there any questions about that particular study or just approval of those things in general? Any questions? I will tell you, we have very few. Most of them are graduate-level masters or doctoral research things, and we look at those two areas. The, ready to move on?
Yeah.
While Trevor's keep chewing, I'll start, I'll keep talking.
All right.
So, he's had a long day. Next item. I can assure you. So because the background work on the Education Support Center is very timely, we wanted to just publicly, in a work session, and, and we are being recorded, you know, just a reminder there, and, and just publicly in a work session, talk about all the places we have looked at, talk to you about the pros and the cons of those places, have any discussion with you all about, about that information. And then we were able, in a recent meeting, where we invited Mr. Francis, Chairman Francis, and the Chairman of the Commission to come to, we think, go from a very broad search to a more narrow search. So we wanted, we don't have an answer or of any kind of final decision. That will take your vote as well as commissioners. But we just wanted to bring you up to speed as much as possible on everything that, that we have done. While Trevor's chewing his last few bites and getting some handouts for you, I will tell you that the demeanor of the commissioners, from my view, has still been very positive. And we've had lots of difficult questions, but I felt like they were appropriate questions. I've not left any meeting with the county manager and, and the other folks we've been meeting with, in which I felt like, oh, this is not going to happen. I've left every meeting feeling like, well, it may not be as easy as we want it to be, but it's, it still looks like it's very possible. And then I'll let Trevor and Mr. Francis, when we get to what happened in our last meeting, comment on that also. But I do think that things are moving forward, and there may be a little light there at the end of the tunnel. So a lot of work's been done. I don't have any more filler time, Dr. Cutnam, so you.
Run over the filler time?
Yep, so you'll, you'll have to start talking about everything that we've looked at and, and get us to the most recent meeting on, was it yesterday or Tuesday?
Yesterday.
Two, on Wednesday, yesterday.
I will say this, that I agree with what Dr. Nolte said about the demeanor and the willingness to work with us on this project. And I want you to also know that your administration is looking out for our interest in a, in a very positive way, making sure that they understand, we don't want a short-term fix that's not what we really want, and then not go for the long-term fix. They've made that very clear, and I appreciate that fact. Every time that I've been in a meeting, it's been made clear that we know we're going to have some type of temporary fix, but we don't want that to become a permanent fix. And I think this board's made that very clear, and our administration has made that clear also. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, looking at your packet, the very first item you see on top, the very first piece of paper you see on top is, it has labeled Central Office. What that is, it shows essentially everything we have in our current building. It is not all-inclusive of a consolidated plan. It's just what, what offices and what spaces do we have currently where we're at in the old hospital or the current Central Office building. I provide that because discussion was had about a temporary location. Any permanent or long-term solution is going to take more time than we have available between now and next December, because really about this time next year, we'll literally be packaging things and boxing things and preparing for a move at the end of this month. So I just wanted you to have that. You can see the numbers there. As far as offices go, the total is 30. There are some other things there that are needed. Workrooms are needed to prepare documents, much like what you have in your hand, as far as copying, copies being made and assembled and put together. So, and record supplies. We'll definitely need room for our current records. Many of those have been digitized and moved over, but there are still, there is still an abundance of paper copies that we have to maintain and keep on record.
Yeah, let me just interject. I mentioned to you, I think, last month, that we would be bringing forth fairly soon a, a plan to digitize EC records, exceptional children's records. Had a meeting with Brandy Stevenson this morning, so maybe in November at a work session and or board meeting, we, we would talk to you about what we're thinking there.
All right. Good. So that said, the, the very next item in your packet is titled 150 Westwood Circle. That is a property or prospective building that the county, county manager actually brought forward as a potential solution. Felt it prudent to at least take a look at that. They've entertained our thoughts, and we certainly want to entertain theirs. My understanding that this was offered as a temporary solution for our current offices at Central Office until a more permanent solution could be decided on, okay? So this is at 150 Westwood Circle, the, the address there. If you flip through this, it, it kind of gives you, you've got the deed in there, who owns it. And then about the third page, it shows you the actual layout. Now, all of this property, it, it is uncertain how much of this property is available. Members of the county management were kind of showing us through, and they are uncertain themselves, so we, we couldn't get any definitive answers. If you look at where the blue 150 is on the, the rooftop view, can you, everybody see the blue 150? That is the actual space that they, that we walked through today to take a look at, and that is the proposed space that they wanted us to look at as far as office space for the current Central Office folks. Preliminary numbers tell me that it's going to be a very tight squeeze, if it will work at all. Essentially, the way that building is laid out, the outer edges all the way around are office spaces. Some of them are classified as mechanical closets or HVAC returns, but predominantly the outer edge of that building is office spaces, varying size, some small, some large. To the center of that loop or circle are three, what would appear to be conference room area or spaces. We would have to maintain at least one of those, but more likely two, because a lot of times, we will simultaneously have meetings going on where information being shared in one does not need to be heard by another. So we would need a, two, two spaces at a minimum for conference. There is a third one that could be divided up. If you count what is currently there right now, you, you don't change anything, you add no walls, no partitions, anything like that, there are 25 spaces. Taking in one of those conference area spaces, you could potentially add two. So we're at 27, and we're needing 30. So you can see it's going to be very, very tight. But I just wanted you to have kind of a, a perspective of what was offered, what we looked at, what, what our current office spaces are, and what this particular parcel offers. So are there any questions? I'm, I'm sure that's not all-inclusive. We just looked at it today, Dr. Nolte and I.
Were the offices in the condition that could be fairly quick moving in?
Yes, it, it's pretty, it's pretty ready to use, we'll say that.
Does everybody know where this piece of property is by looking at it?
So I'll give you some kind of direction.
Wellco, wasn't it?
It's the old Wellco.
Wellco fact.
This must have been at one time a warehouse space, because on the backside of it is a, a space that HVO currently uses. It was in use. There were workers in there, and they were going at it. And this space was an, had been renovated to be an office space on the front side of the building. And so it, it was carpeted, suspended, or dropped ceilings. You, it had a closet there where IT had been installed. There was a little work area and a little kitchen there, a couple of bathrooms that are workable. And then off to the side was a, a really rough, unfinished loading dock area.
That, that was to the left.
So, yeah, to ori, to orient you, as you're looking at it like this, over here on this side, so.
Left of 150.
To the left-hand side of the page, to the left of the 150, is it like a offloading dock storage area-looking space? Very rough, very unfinished. It hadn't been attended too much, but it might be suitable for the storage that we have down below, underneath the, the hospital building now, which is known as the morgue. We, we refer to it as the basement now, so that might be a holding area for those records that are paper copies that we were talking about. It'll be, it's a tight squeeze.
What's to the right of that?
It's a, it's a HV, HVO.
Where the town of Waynesville is, where Pioneer Feed and Seed is?
Yep. Pioneer's on those.
Right behind it. George Javon's on the left.
I think HVO may own all of it. They certainly occupy a great portion of it. And there was a, an agency who had used the section that we walked through today for a period of time for offices, and they have not been out long. So it's, it's in pretty good repair, not, not something you'd want to be in forever without a major overhaul, but, you know, for a year or two, if, if that's the best choice, we could probably squeeze in there. More, more study to be done, but.
Would this have more space than Annex 2?
I haven't walked Annex 2. I'd certainly want to do that. What, what the county manager, he provided some numbers as to what they would have to do ahead of that. And again, we're all kind of Haywood County residents and being prudent with how funds are spent. It seemed to be a lot more expensive. They'd have to put in an elevator shaft.
Yep.
To bring it up to ADA code, to be occupied by us, and, you know, I'll throw a rough number out there of about $150,000 just to get us an Annex 2.
And this, this building's very ADA accessible. You, this, you could roll right in the front door and roll around flat inside.
All right. It's all one level?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so moving to the, the next packet that's in your, that, that was bundled together, is the Eight Acre Property. It's labeled Eight Acre Property, and I just put in there the, the, this is all the properties that I've been to look at, and I just put in there pros and cons at the top of each. One of these are all stapled together in this final packet that you have. And the first is the Eight Acre Property. So to kind of give you a location, if you are leaving our current Central Office and you go down to the traffic circle and you bypass Test Farm Road, immediately there in the corner of that roundabout, that actually, this land actually abuts the roundabout in that location. There's eight acres there, 7.91, I've been told, at some points in time, and 7.99, just to be accurate, with one acre of it unusable because of floodplain. The creek that runs along the back of this property and actually forms the, the boundary for this property. I learned that there was some field dirt in there. And, and I'm going to put my disclaimer out here. My disclaimer is that the realtor told me that it had been compacted and was build-ready. That's according to the realtor, so that's Trevor's disclaimer. I do not know that to be a fact. That is a, a level line parcel in good location. It is next to a handhold. So to explain what a handhold is just a little bit for some that may not know, essentially, DPI, or Department of Public Instruction, built an infrastructure, a fiber network that connects every school in the state of North Carolina, and they run a fiber line to connect all those. And that fiber line runs right along that parcel of land, so there's a handhold there. There is also city water and sewer accessible there. So it has a lot of, of the things that we would want in a, in a parcel of property. It needs to be near that network. It needs to have city water and sewer, and it needs to be a pretty level line so that we can build a, a good facility that is both ADA compliant, allows for us to sprawl just a little bit, good parking, and keep the cost down on excavating. So it seems to be a, a, a good property to consider. Are there some other properties near that that might be available in the future?
Might be.
There is.
Okay.
Oh, you, you got some property right there.
I'll let y'all talk about that. I'm just telling you what I know about, so.
If we put it there, Mr. Francis could walk across the street for the board meetings.
Yeah.
I could.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
His property, or his dad's property, I assume.
Yeah. He's enjoying that property, too.
I'm thinking a donation, I just.
There's some other land close by.
Let's do the first project first.
Yeah, yeah. The price tag on that piece of property is 1.35 million, and it is owned by Haywood So the next property, as you flip, so the backside of that was just more of a description to add or sell of that Eight Acre Property. So the second page in your packet where it's highlighted in yellow at the top is BCA Property or Bethel Christian Academy. Went and walked that. The current purchase price for that is 2.5 million. The pros of it is that it has, and this, again, just to, I guess I ought to back up and clarify, this is Bethel Christian Academy in Canton. It's the old YMCA, so that everybody's familiar with what that is. The pros of it are the terrazzo floors, which, very low maintenance, and they'll be there forever, well-maintained, it has been well-maintained, and has a full functioning gym. The old pool area is a concrete slab for development. Essentially, it's a blank canvas. They've concreted it in, and, but there's no flooring on it, there's no floor, ceiling adjustments, it's just as it was when it was a pool, except it's been filled in. That's, that's a pro. You'll also hear me list it here in a con as well. That's cost that's got to be added in. The front portico is deteriorating, that's the concrete awning. A lot of finish work needed in the basement. Again, that's that pool area, which is both a pro and a con. Multiple leaks in lower-level classrooms. The entrances and fire escapes are in poor repair. The fire escapes appeared to have a lot of rust. I don't know if the integrity of those structures have been compromised because of the rust, but they looked pretty rough, so they definitely have, have to have some work done to those. The training space, and the reason that's listed as a con, they do have the gym area, and they have the pool area that was concreted in that could be partitioned to create additional office spaces. Create the consolidated plan, we need 46 to 48 offices. If you'll remember, we have 14 EC or exceptional children staff that are housed at the old Hazelwood Daycare. So that is 40, 46 to 48 approximately is what we need.
ITC and Food Services.
Right, well, Dr. Nolte's whispering to me, ITC, Food Services. But if you look at areas large enough for training rooms that you would want to use, well, then you would want to preserve that gym, you would want to preserve the pool area, and you really can't do that. You're either dividing it up for office spaces, or you're leaving it intact for training spaces, and either way, you, you don't have enough room for all the other things coming in. So that's, that's why I list that as a con. As far as how the building sits in its current state, the upper has 12 office spaces, and the lower has 11 office spaces, or AKA classrooms, and we need 46 for the CO and EC, not to mention space for school food services, offices, freezers, and storage. So we didn't really feel like that's a viable option.
I want to be hard, if you ever did build, I say freezer, storage spaces, you're in a floodplain, so you're even going to be able to build there.
Yeah, what, first of all, you just couldn't do your overall plan, so.
Right.
If we didn't have the meeting rooms, we could not move the learning center from the old Hazelwood School upstairs next door, excuse me, clicked the mic there on, on the way through. So that would be tough. If you weren't in a floodplain, then a big maybe, because you could put a metal building beside of it and put something in there, but construction in the floodplain would make it pretty tough.
Any questions on that property before I move to the next one? All right, my yellow highlighting fell off on the Kmart property, I'm not sure why. The Kmart property has a lot of pros. The amount, sorry, he's offering me a highlighter, can't help it. The amount of available space would support all of, support services, and when I say all, I mean, transportation, maintenance. I, I know that's not a, a part of our original consolidated plan, but it was added as, you know, if that was in the interest of the county, we certainly would be open to that idea of, of moving off the landfill and, and consolidating those services as well if they so chose. It's a big building. Depending on the amount and afforded with the building, it gives you potential for growth. Location is near to the statewide interconnectivity. That's, again, there's another handhold there that runs along the 1923 bypass, and I think it's within allowable limits where they would connect with Kmart at a. Uh, at a, they might actually fund that. If you get too far out, the, the state actually makes you pay for it. And for every mile you travel outside of that network, it's sixty-five thousand dollars a mile. So it can, it can get up there really, really quick. Uh, it obviously does have city water and sewer. Um, it's a big open building. Um, primarily the only partitioned walls, if any of you've ever been in Kmart, and I'm sure you have, I have. Uh, or along the outside walls where you, um, where the change rooms are and storage in the back. So it's, it's pretty much just a big, open blank canvas that you could pretty readily go in there and drop ceilings. Run internet, uh, cable, uh, electrical lights, flooring, partitioned walls, pretty readily. So, um, uh, to me, it, it, it's an attractive option. Um, and it, it's in a great location. Um, the only con to it is, and I put my email correspondence with the realtor on the back of this page. It is that it's lease only. I had called the realtor. I said, she told me it was a lease. And I was quick to tell her I do not speak for the board, although it's my job to find out all the information I can. Could you find out if it's for sale? Cause I'm not sure our board would be in favor of a lease. Uh, so that I can have both options. And you can see she emailed me back and said he would not be interested in selling. From the meeting the other day, um, I'll just say that there was a, a bit of latitude given to negotiate. And continue conversations about this property. And so I, I intend to do that. A place to call in to her, uh, to the realtor today. I have not heard back from her. So I don't have any additional information, but I'll. I'll stay on that until I do make contact with her. Uh, to see if there might be any reconsideration on selling the property. But, uh, I listed leasing as a con. Uh, and I, I'll feel comfortable. I'll stand by this, uh, whomever might review what I've said and shared. Um, I shared with, um, commissioner, the commissioners present and county manager. Uh, leasing sometimes is a good option, uh, in, in a variety of situations. Um, however, leases. It's almost like deferring the payment down the road. Eventually the payment comes due. So if we would be in a much better situation to own property to build on. If you think about the amount of renovation that we would do in the Kmart building. Only to lease and someone else maintain ownership, that, you know, it's kind of a scary proposition for me. I'm not speaking for any of you. I'm just sharing my thoughts on it. So. Um, that's the Kmart property. And then last, but, uh, certainly not least, uh, was the Haywood EMC property. Uh, the pros, the property could be used. Uh, if we go to the rear and build with a two to three story elevation, and I, again, I've done it twice. Let me back up. So this Haywood EMC property, if you leave out of our current central office. And you travel down toward the roundabout, just before the roundabout. This is the, uh, light tan brick building that sits on a, a very rectangular piece of property. It's very slender, but it goes back there a long way. As you travel back on the property to the rear of it, it begins to elevate. There is the potential to build on that two stories and, and your ADA access. Be somewhat more readily available because of the elevation. However, um, the, the property. Uh, as, as it lies, has a building on it. And that building, um, the day I visited and walked through, uh, upon opening the door. Uh, I was met with a very pungent mold and mildew smell. Um, it, it had been abated. It had been abated by tearing out all existing carpet. And tearing out all existing tiles and the smell was still very strong. Where they had torn out the carpet throughout the building. Uncovered was asbestos tile with glue left on it. Um, in, in my opinion, or my judgment back to you. That, that would be a complete demolition.
Now let, let me, in case this is video that someone watches later. Appeared from our observations to be asbestos tile. We've certainly not tested or anything else. That was our observation. Just wanted to make that little clarification.
Yeah.
That's probably what it is, but we don't, we are not the experts on that. So for the video record.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, so, and the, the property is listed at nine hundred and fifty thousand. That's a price drop of three hundred thousand. Um, I spoke with the realtor about that just a little bit. It is at nine hundred and fifty thousand. The property is comparable to nearby properties. I'll, I'll say that. However. These are my best guesstimates. Um, you have probably three quarters of a million to a million in liability in those buildings.
Let me, yeah. Let me add one other property that we, um, we didn't really, um, walk or investigate. That we did ask about during our very first meeting. And that was, uh, the property on, uh, J Creek owned by the commissioners. We did not, uh, follow up on that for a couple of reasons. In our initial discussion, they didn't give us a lot of information and they're not, they, they're not required to. But it seemed as if that they had specific plans for that. The other great big con for that property. Other than it maybe being a little far west, it's still on the corridor of nineteen twenty-three or forty. Is the sixty-five, uh, thousand dollars per mile to run the high speed internet. Would be outlandish for that property. So with those two things, we, uh, sort of self-removed ourself from further discussion of that. They didn't seem real interested in it and we would spend a lot of money on internet access before we did anything else.
I thought they had already, I live right across from.
Yep.
I thought they already planned on putting a park or something. That's what they told everybody. They were going to put a park or something.
Yeah. And that may be, Ms. Barrett, we did not inquire. We asked them about, you know, we were just, uh, that was early in our discussions. I think we're much closer now to things to look at and, um. Mr. Francis and, um, and Dr. Putnam and I can talk about our last meeting, which was a lot more specific. Uh, we'll do that as best we can, but they didn't share with us what the plan was, but they.
That's what I've heard. I've heard for sure, but I, I live right across from there and that's what I've heard they're going to do.
They indicated that that was, uh, uh, something they planned to use. And then when, uh, Dr. Putnam looked at the internet cost. It was just, it seemed like a big cost for that when other locations were minimal, if anything at all.
That brings up one question on mine. As far as your internet access, like the area in the Jones Cove area and that area, is the internet there? I mean, the college is close by, so I figure it's probably at that area.
Uh, my best estimate, yes. What we've been told is it runs along nineteen twenty-three.
Okay. So then on the east end of county, near I forty, on the Canton, that area.
Yeah, not, not I forty.
For sure over there, if it's over there or not. So.
Yeah.
I, I. It's a good point to bring up. Yeah. I didn't realize it costs that much to run the internet. That, that's.
Yeah. Not on I forty in Canton. Uh, our understanding is along the nineteen twenty-three business corridor.
The way I had it explained by IT directors and others is that would not be how you connect west to the other schools. There are no other schools out forty. They're out nineteen twenty-three toward Hayesville, Murphy, Robbinsville. Um, so it's traveling nineteen twenty-three. They typically find a thoroughfare that will carry them there to, and, and connect.
Thank you. Um, you, you want me to start on the last part or you guys want to start?
Uh, we'll add just one other thing, uh, because you may get questions. Hey, have you looked at the belt building? Uh, we did inquire about the belt building and the belt building, um, to the best of our understanding. It is getting ready to go under lease by two separate businesses. So who those businesses are and when that'll come into play, I do not know. But the best we can tell, it's not available.
Just about the right size. Not available. Uh, let me just start on the last part and then I'll let Dr. Putnam and Mr. Francis, either one fill in. We left the, uh, meeting with, and I'm trying not to disclose too much because part of this is, um. Uh, we don't want to talk about negotiation points. Those can only be covered like in a closed session of a particular body. And we're not at that point yet. Um, but, um, we left with a pretty good consensus in the room. That we should, uh, uh, feel free to negotiate. Uh, with the, uh, Kmart property folks and with the property owners near the roundabout. And that pending our, um. Initial review of the property at the old Wellco, that we might want to do the same there. And so we will certainly do that. Uh, you know, we, we did not really find out if the whole Wellco place were available, but that's something we'll look. We'll, we'll be looking at those three pieces of property and they may or may not come to fruition. And then of course, at your direction, you know, we'll do more than that or less than that. But is that, is that safely covering the bases, Mr. Francis?
I think so.
Yeah.
I felt like that they empowered our board through our administration to proceed. Of course they get final up or down vote, but I felt like we were in, the word I would use is empowered to, to do our search.
Yep. Um, I, I, um. I felt like we got more done in that hour and a half than we had gotten done in the previous weeks. No, um, no discredit at all to the people we were meeting with before. Um, but I just felt like we had looked at it for quite some time and had several meetings and we were able to go. Narrow it down. Narrow it down. You guys go look at these things. And certainly if something else pops up. Um, then you all can direct us to look at that and we'll take that back to the folks with the county that we've been looking at. I'd say that's hearsay. Let's wait on that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. On the property that's near the roundabout, that's across the, uh. Well, the one is the eight acres.
Correct.
Is it, do they have compaction test on where that's been filled?
Not to our knowledge.
To our knowledge.
We, we, we certainly want to ask for those. And that was mentioned in our meeting, that that's one of the things we'd have to ask for.
How many, uh, uh, that's been clear for a while though, hasn't it?
Yeah.
I, we're probably okay. You know, I used to degrade and not, there's so many years where it's.
Or compacted.
Where the rain and snow and stuff.
It's been on the market approximately two years.
But yeah, but I mean, definitely checked on it. The question is, can, could we just go ahead and, and, and look at buying this property?
I know we looked at it one time before and, um, there were some questions about. Actual building sites on that piece of property, if I remember correctly. And whether, you know, how, you know, where we could actually build in, 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 on that piece of property. And I don't know if, if long-term, if we're looking to consolidate everything, if it's really going to be adequate to do that long range plan that we've been. You know, we'd hope to do or been talking about.
To answer Mr. Clark's question first, we were empowered to negotiate any way we feel appropriate. And take that information back to, um, our joint conversations with the commissioners. So yeah, that would be on the table to ask them that. And certainly we'll, we won't leave any stone unturned. Cause we, and I think Chairman Francis captured it adequately. They, I don't want to be too loose with the tongue here or speak for them, but they essentially said, go, go get them. And negotiate and then bring back what you've, what you find. And that was very encouraging. They didn't promise us, you know, a hundred million dollars or anything like that. They did not, but they were very encouraging. And then, um. You know, regarding the property that's, that is there, I think you just have, had to have complete due diligence and make sure you didn't purchase something. Unless it worked. You get the soil compaction test, have engineers come out and look at it.
You had to do cordrayons anyway.
Yeah, all that stuff.
Yeah.
Since Bobby's not here, we, I could say we've got ten acres to negotiate some trading with.
Well, they, they asked us about that. Uh, they asked us about the property. Uh, again, somebody may, somebody may watch this video later. That's why we make them. They asked us about the property adjacent to Tuscola. And I pretty directly told them that, um. That was a piece of property that we bought to protect that campus. And that it does have, uh, water running through the middle of it, not much, but a little bit. And that would take a lot of money to abate. Um, and it would take a lot of time to abate it because you have to do some swapping of property when you do those things. And that there, there were folks who had, uh, great sincere ambitions about that being a multi. Uh, purpose, great big complex someday, but that we did not. I am speaking for myself, not for the board, but administratively, we did not see that kind of thing being, uh, practical for this facility. Or even other stuff being in the near future. So they did ask about that. Just, they asked about that about like the same way we asked about the J Creek property. And, um, I think they accepted my answer, uh, well, just like we accepted their answer on the J Creek property. Probably doesn't make the best sense to, to use either of those.
Any other questions?
Good.
Great meeting.
Yes.
Well, I do want to make one more comment. When I talked to Kevin and, and Brandon, they both were really positive about it.
Mm-hmm.
They were both, um, you know, the point we were talking about is, um. Be careful since I'm on TV, but, uh. You know, we built this great big courthouse. To me, I don't think that should be the symbol of our county and that was my point. I think the school system.
Maybe we do use that comment.
And one of the things that Brandon talked about was that everybody that comes in asks about the schools. Everybody that requires, inquires about a business or an industry or a commercial or anything. The first question they ask is how's the school? Cause they need to see how they can get people in here.
Yeah. Trevor asked me about something earlier related to the courthouse. I think, um, and I'll be careful, but you know, with the purpose of this meeting is to bring as many of our board members up to speed as we can. So I'll try to say this the right way. There are, I think, some people opposed just being honest with you about spending any kind of money on an administrative office. Um, do you want to say what the, the chairman, uh, Inslee said about the, um. Uh, a court facility. And I think it helps him, I, I think he, because of that building, understands. The value of consolidating services under one roof. I thought that was very, um. Intuitive of him and, um, and wise, uh, because of his experiences.
Yeah, there, there was a, a good dialogue and an understanding of. You know, building infrastructure is not glitz and glam. It's not what people can get behind all the time. Um. And I'll, I'll speak for myself and then I'll just, you know, I'll say that, uh, Chairman Inslee seemed to grasp that and know that. Um, what I shared with him was, you know, I wasn't super excited when they upgraded. Uh, the sewer lines and water lines through my neighborhood. You know, woo-hoo, you know, new, new plumbing, new drains, new whatever. However, it's a much needed thing and, and it has to be done. Um, likening that to an administrative building for a school system. Um, there, there's nothing about that that, you know, excites people, but it's a, it's a necessary evil, if you will. Um, that will promote, uh, greater efficiency, uh, down the road. will, um, that will promote, uh, greater efficiency, uh, down the road, and preserve a, a viable elementary school option in the future, and save everyone a whole lot of money. And so, um, Chairman Insley seemed to understand that, um, he has witnessed the infrastructure that has been built throughout Haywood County in lots of ways, uh, the Department of Health and Human Services building, uh, the courthouse, and, and again, no one was super excited to have those things, but they are needed, uh, and so, I, I thought it was wise or prudent on his part to recognize that.
Yeah, he, he, and again, Kevin, if you're watching this, I apologize to you, but Mr. Chairman Insley, he said he remembered the days when court was held in three or four locations around the county, before the justice center was built, which was not a popular build, but he said, you know, the clerk of court and that the other people in that, uh, job would gather up evidence and everything else and take it to Canton and take it to the Waynesville courtroom and take it to the, uh, 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 old Daco, uh, building for court, and in invariably, that took time and energy and gas and money that you were paying people, and that people, he, he, people are human beings, so they made mistakes and forgot a piece of paper, and that impacted what was going on, see, he, he equated that to what we're trying to do, and that it's just more efficient and effective. So I, 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 you know, I was sitting there thinking, that's a guy that has lived some experiences and gained some wisdom from that, so I, I think, maybe all the commissioners understand that, but certainly he expressed that verbally, and that was, that was really encouraging.
Well, good work.
Thank you.
Excellent work.
Well, Dr. Nolte, it's, you know, when you're, when you're the man, the boss, y- you a lot of times don't get very much credit, you're busy patting others on the shoulder like he's doing me right now, but he's done a fantastic job. His timing is impeccable, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, don't tell that story. Alright, thank you.
Alright. Anybody else see any other comments?
We'll continue to keep you up to speed as we gather more information and get your input, cause we will have to have it when there's a point to move forward, you will have to have your vote and authority to move forward on certain things.
Alright, we're, we're done.